Twenty twenty three, if everyone could please rise, pledge allegiance to the all by a moment of silence.
By the means of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone can be seated. Proclamations, the limitations under four A, we have one recognizing air fire fighters day. And just like to give a quick shout out to Councilman Utecheck for organizing the care package that went out to the fire department last Thursday. Everyone chipped in, but they were the brains behind it, so.
And thank you, Mr. Foley, for dropping off my stuff.
I delivered them all without eating any, so. All right, so proclamation for International Firefighters Day. Whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to protection of life ripened property, and sometimes that dedicates them in the form of countless hours, volunteer over many years, in others it is many selfless years working in the industry. In all cases, it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. And whereas International Firefighters Day, the IFDB, is a time where the community can recognize and honor the sacrifice that work that firefighters make, ensuring that their communities and environment are as safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions. And whereas International Firefighters Day is observed on each year on the Fourth of May, on where we remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives protecting the safety of all of us. And show our support and appreciation to the firefighters who provide, who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas healing from all walks of life, they are mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without warning, a recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are in the essence and true meaning of community. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Jones, Chair of the Town Council, on behalf of the town council meeting at large, now call upon citizens of Talon, of the town of Talon, and of all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the day of May fourth in recognition of the patriotic service and dedicated efforts of our fire emergency service personnel. David of Talon, Connecticut, this fourth day of May, twenty twenty three. Moving on to item five, we have no, actually, item five, public petitions, communication, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. You are on Zoom, you can hit star nine or the raised hand function, or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and state your name and address for the record. Going once. Going twice for public comment. Three times. Public comment is closed, we'll move to six public hearing items, which there are none. Seven A reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. So I've got a quick update from Megan for the Firehouse Subcommittee, canceled next week's meeting, will withhold that in June. Right now, the contractors working on the foundation, hopefully pouring in tomorrow, everything is running on time and on budget. They're analyzing exterior colors, some new building can be ordered, they will then work on septic and foundations, but there'll be some downtime. Anything unexpected comes up, we'll schedule a special meeting, so that's it for us, and then Barbara.
Yes, so we're gonna have a special meeting on Monday, was that May fifteenth? Agenda seems to have thrown out, I don't know if there's one that was done, I can tell real quick. And the agenda is put on separately, but I request the Veterans Commission, Boy Scouts requests. Recently, we have added a bulk waste funding request.
Councilman Utecheck? That brings us to, I found screens from there. Item seven B, reports of town council liaisons, session, I'm gonna go over to Councilmember Murray there first, and we left the right.
Through that ag commission met last week, I was not able to attend due to a personal conflict. But they continue to be supporting the farmers market on the Green, which was a big success this Sunday. And moving forward with some other farmer-related initiatives.
Thank you, Councilmember Murray, Councilor Tom.
We met in, there was a meeting of the EDC. And we talked about basically housing.
Thank you. Vice Chair Regan?
I was already met last night, I was in a meeting, so people to the medicine.
All right, the Water Commission has a meeting on May fifteenth. And then I actually forgot for, for the committee's part of the council, land acquisition advisory committee will be meeting the eighteenth at four o'clock to discuss the Talon Marsh property. Sorry, Councilman Utecheck?
So May first, Talon Mental Health, obviously, advisory test course that first, unfortunately, due to some of these stepping down vice chair, I think his last meeting is the first meeting in June, right after that June meeting that we have. They've introduced an assistant, a human search director, Caitlin Mather, and so it's both really highly occurred, and then Deb also talked about, Beverly also talked about the, his name is some possible help with everything that we talked about. And this would cost about forty thousand dollars, but with that will be a grant that would help offset that person, that could help us, that person would help us from Hakuna Valley, information sections and different challenges agents, President, CBN, clinic, expand, case management, a social worker for emergency agreement, and just liaison for the clinical to town. Did I miss anything? And what was his first name, was it Mark?
David.
David, I just said Jacob's so good, he has Mr. So, so I didn't have Mark, I apologize for that. But anyways, it's a lot of good stuff, and I believe also the forty thousand can get us for a couple of years, if that's.
I'm working with David, I'm getting a proposal together.
Yeah.
To have reach of the town manager.
Okay, so at least it'll get us started, which is good.
Yeah.
So that was a really good conversation. And then also again, the task force brought up, they felt that their role has been completed as a task force. They think that the town council should convert into a regular commission, so we talked about that for a while. The makeup would be completely different.
Yeah.
Now I believe they're down two members plus two alternates.
Okay. When we do step second.
They, yeah, that's, so that's gonna really get fun on.
No, they're just down two alternates, I'm sorry.
Two alternates, and then I'm gonna do, okay, so just one regular, two.
Okay.
Just feel like people keep stepping down.
Yeah.
Anyways, so that's that, and then last night. Tom, Recreation Advisory Board met. Bruce wrote the facility updates regarding the water systems are running well, the crossarms and the grand old park. We discussed the power for money, how successful that's going, that we know with all programs that fill up to Max, he said. And then I mentioned last time, there's gonna be a movie night on August eleventh at the rec department, and that is gonna be free to the town, he's working on some awesome other things, and also for people that like to kayak, they got six kayaks offered grant, so they're for anybody in Talon. And you can take them out of town, you just have to go down the rec sector and sign them up. I don't think I know some people, and you can rent all six, you can get them out on Thursday, Saturday, Sunday.
Nice.
And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Utecheck, and I'd just add, there's a conservation commission meeting this Thursday on May eleventh, so hopefully you'll pop on for part of that. All right, that brings us to eight point one, general budget discussion and consideration of a resolution to establish the no rates. Obviously, the referendum passed, we'd like to thank everyone who came out their vote, obviously, turnout blew twenty percent is always kind of good, but we've been making some gradual improvements since we didn't have one in twenty twenty with the COVID nineteen pandemic, so hopefully as the years progress, there'll be more outreach and more engagement to push those numbers back up towards maybe the twenty, mid twenties, maybe low thirties.
Actually, this was higher than previous years, in years, it was nineteen, almost nineteen and quarter percent.
Yeah. But with that, is there any discussion from council members? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask how the adjustments of the town budget were made and how that information will be presented to the council?
So when the night we voted on the budget and we were told to come up with, I believe it was a hundred and ninety thousand, but a hundred and forty thousand dollars cuts operationally. We, I met with Lisa and my directors, and our best we could, we determined where we could make the most painless cuts without cutting services, without literally cutting jobs, and where there would actually just be a literal cut in services. The most notable was obviously the bulk waste pickup at eighteen thousand dollars. In, in our estimation, there was just no way to avoid that, and in fact, had the bunch referendum failed, it would have been, there would have been some, some cuts that certainly would not have been welcomed by many. So that was how we made the determination, and I'm happy to share, this is my first time through anyway, that you would like us to share it.
Yeah, I, I didn't know until I had a conversation with Steve yesterday that, for example, the bulk waste had been removed from the budget, so I, I understand that the council voted, and we did vote to reduce the town budget, I just, I know, like, with the Board of Ed side of things, there was a presentation by Dr. Willett on what could be cut, and the Board of Ed voted formally on what needed to change in their budget in order to meet the number that the town council approved, so it, it seems to me that there's a little disconnect maybe on our side that we could take as a learning moment and make sure that in future years that those conversations can happen more collaboratively, even if it means that there needs to be a special meeting with the council for the council to be presented with your recommendations, Brian. I felt a little like I wasn't involved in the process of adjusting the town budget, and I'm sure that wasn't your intent, I just want to make sure that we kind of take, you know, put whatever needs to be put into place so that in future years, we have the opportunity to be involved in that process.
So I embrace the theory and philosophy certainly. The Board of Ed has their processes, and the Board of Ed has their successes and their failures. I asked, what typically do we do year to year? I, I didn't just blindly go ahead and say, we're not gonna tell council, so no, that was not the intent. And that typically was left to the town manager, finance director, and department heads to determine where the cuts were. If we're to add another layer in there, I can certainly see some discussions that could be painting, argumentative, and difficult for all, I, I'm all for ideas, how do we, you know, I, I, how do we do it in the past, has that ever been done in the past? Or does anyone know the answer to that?
Does the council reduce?
No, has, is there like a presentation saying this is what we're gonna cut and?
Well, I mean, you've been on one of them, but I have, but.
I don't, I don't remember a formal presentation coming from the town manager as far as, because ever since I've been here, I think, correct me if I'm wrong Lisa, but I think the council, the town manager reduced the initial budget, and then the council's always reduced it further in my experience here, and I don't recall if there's ever been a formal presentation from the town manager to you.
No, historically, if I may.
Yes.
Okay, historically, what has occurred is that the town council may want to get to a number, and they may have some ideas that they've discussed, they share it with the manager in the meeting, which some were that evening when you made the reductions of the hundred and ninety thousand. Historically, they told the manager, okay, we want to cut a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand. Manager goes back, meets with his department heads, and comes up with those cuts, and usually will make the cuts at that point in the budget. There's never been any formal deliberations with the town council after that, it's just basically giving him the authority to make the cuts where he feels it's gonna be the least impact on the overall operation, and that's what Brian did.
Sure, I, I understand that, thank you, I appreciate that clarification, Lisa and John. I, I know that some of like the requests and the ideas that were discussed during our budget meeting, there were, there were even some that had bipartisan approval that were not included as changes to the town manager's budget. For example, some of the programming at the library, there was a request from multiple counselors to put that back in, and I, I I saw from the list that Steve provided that those weren't put back in, so to me, I, I think there was always an opportunity to make improvements, and I hope that, you know, in future years, that perhaps this information can be presented, at the very least, it could be formally presented to the council, like we, I know that your office, Lisa, is working on the budget, getting the budget books ready, and I understand that that takes time, and and I want you and your, your staff to have the sufficient time to do that, but perhaps a memo from the town manager to the council. And then if we had objections or concerns, we could bring it back for more discussion, I, I'm just kind of throwing out ideas here, I just, I think that there's room for improvement in this process, and I hope we can find a way to make improvement and move forward.
No, thank you, Councilmember Murray, and I think even reflecting on last year's budget, I think at most, you know, when we reduced the town budget by a hundred thousand after the first referendum failed, I think, I think Lisa, you just kind of summarized, well, we're not adding the position that we requested, I think it was, we delayed the start time of one position, we didn't add on the first. Yeah, it's like that was kind of the highest level I think we've ever had in terms of like immediate feedback.
The other thing I'd like to add, just also because unfortunately, our budget process got delayed by that photo bombing. We had one day turnaround to get the legal advertisement into the newspaper, so it made it even more difficult to try to set a meeting with council or anything else this time around, because we would not have had enough time to get the advertisement to the Journal Enquirer by their deadline. And we actually had a habit the next day, if I'm not mistaken, it was the next day after the council meeting by noon to them.
Yeah.
So we were cramming all night and day trying to figure out what to do, just to be able to have the document ready for them, but I understand Council Murray's concerns and certainly working with Brian.
Yeah, I have an idea, we, we don't have to make cuts next year, maybe.
That, that is a very ambitious goal. But no, I, I think there was someone about Council Murray's comments in terms of just general transparency, just having that of the ability, because I know to some degree, I think is, as she said, you know, she wasn't aware of some of the reductions until I mentioned it after getting the file from, from you and Lisa, and I think there were some, you know, blurbs on social media that other people knew about the cut before the council did, so I think there was just some concerns and transparency that you know, the public knew before the council did in terms of the reduction of the bulk waste, so, but again, it's learning, wouldn't that have been in the if the public found out about it, if we put it out publicly, that it was given to the council at the same time, right?
If.
Because they read it.
I don't know how the public found out what was being cut or whatever, because nothing was released as far as I know.
It was posted, so it was either in the, it was posted, so.
There's, so yeah, they heard it.
Yeah, but yeah, and yeah, regardless, it's just a, a lesson learning, as, as Councilmember Murray indicated, and I think just a bit additional transparency, but I do appreciate a lot of what's in here in terms of the proposed cuts, I think it did cover a lot of what was requested in terms of, you know, reducing the costs for the nip and bottle fees to go towards the cleaning, some of the reduced diesel costs, the per gallon fee for, for gas fees, saving, you know, nearly ten thousand dollars off that production, so there was, there was a lot taken in there, but we appreciate it, thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in eight point one. Lou's not here, so nobody, so I'm gonna have to jump on first.
This is Councilmember Murray, so moved.
So by Councilmember Murray, is there a second? Second by Councilor Khan, I think he falls in favor, see, we'll do a roll call, Lou. Uh, Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Councilman Utecheck?
Aye.
And I have an I, so that is unanimous, sorry, I missed, did you second? Okay.
Yeah. Sammy, point to the John, but that's what happens when you raise your hand, Sammy.
Yeah. Yep, all right. We'll move on to item eight point two, consideration or resolution for supplemental appropriations for one bridge improvement project to be funded a hundred percent by state and federal funds, and setting a public hearing on May twenty third, twenty twenty three.
So this is the fourth bridge that we're having done, the bottom line is a big chunk will be paid by the state of Connecticut, and the big, a big chunk will be paid by the federal government, twenty day, twenty percent, eighty percent. This is gonna be the, somewhere down the industrial park, this is the last one up off South River Road, I believe. And I have with me Megan to talk about, Megan Moss, I'm sorry, to talk about anything that you guys want to know about the grant, or any, any questions that you may have, Megan, did I miss anything?
So I think just the high level assumption is we are, Alex, you're issuing debt that we're expecting to get fully reimbursed for. Yeah, so we have to have a public hearing because it's a level of debt that is above a half percent or a one percent of the general fund.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe, maybe.
Yes.
Okay, basically, I'm not sure if we will be issuing debt for this or not. It all depends on, because there's four bridges, we already, you already approved three, and it's all one hundred percent state grant, bond, fund, great, grant funded. But it's on a reimbursable basis, so we have to front the cash flow to get the money back, and because it's an appropriation for the project, whether it's grant funding or whatever, we have to we have to go to a public hearing because the appropriation has to be put in place, because it's over what our charter allows. So as far, when we get closer to the project starting to take off and initiate, then we look at our cash flow and where we're sitting with, you know, four available cash funds on hand. And some of it I may be able to front, some of it I may have to do grant anticipation notes, and if that's the case, I'll have to come back to you for that authorization to do that. So right now, we don't have the cash flow identified until the projects start moving, which I understand is going to be a couple of years, I think. So that, that's all I have.
Now, I appreciate that clarification, are there any other questions, your council members? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution and set the public hearing as laid out in eight point two.
I'll make the motion.
So by Councilman Utecheck, is there a second?
A second.
Shout out by Vice Chair Regan, and I'll do the roll call, starting with Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Councilor Khan? Vice Chair Regan?
Aye.
Councilman Utecheck?
Aye.
And I have an I, so that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point three, consideration of proposed revision to Article Six, Chapter Subsection, or one thirty-six, twenty-one to thirty point one of the Town Code, ordinance number sixty, local factory program for permanently disabled and senior residents, and setting up a public hearing on the twenty-third, twenty twenty thirty.
So this is the, again, as you just mentioned, setting of the public hearing to be ordinance sixty, which was the tax assistance tax freeze program for our senior citizens, that has several layers to it, that was very complicated, while well-intended, and I believe underutilized as a result, council asked anyone last year to get on it and make some improvements with the help of Lisa and Jason, and especially Bob Rubino. We've been able to come up with a much simpler process that I believe should be more successful, and while also remaining very fiscally safe and sound for our town. Jason and Lisa are here for it, and also that penalty.
And officer.
For this, the, I'm sorry.
Mr. Rubino is also on.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, he, he popped on, he sent a quick message, and he'd be available.
The whole gang's here, so if you want to have any questions, this is, this is, as we discussed before, and now this is the formality of the public, going to the public hearing.
So one quick, or two quick recommendations, I think, going forward, public hearings, some discussions that have to be heard, council members. I think as we before, we'd like to see what the impact of the program would be if the credit was increased from two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars as the starting year. And the second item that has been discussed by a few people, and I think one of our residents who spoke at our last meeting talked about every other year having to come back, so wanting to know, you know, what sort of impact, if any, there would be if we extended it to every three years, rather than having to come back every other year to reapply and fall by and get that additional hundred dollars to community on the program, so I think overall, we're very happy with a lot of the updates, Jason, Bev, Bob, that you've all done. We just would like to make the program a little bit easier for, for seniors, and perhaps give a, a stronger start to the, the credit that gets applied to new applicants, so obviously, doesn't need to be answered now what that impact would be, but just bringing any of that data forward to the council during the public hearing and providing that as part of the packet would be beneficial. So we'll try to add it to you, or the packet in advance, and then prepare it for it, and it's all up to her. I know, Mr. Rubino, I sent it over, I think, previously, some sanitized versions of the spreadsheet, so council members have been taking a look at it and plugging in their own numbers and own thoughts to it, but those are two areas that we'd like to further amend the program. Understood. Are there any other questions, comments from council members?
I just want to thank Mr. Rubino and Lisa, Bev, and Jason for working so hard to put this together, thank you, I know it wasn't probably an easy thing to do.
The other. Seeing no further discussion, I'll, if you're getting a motion to approve the resolution, or approve the resolution for setting the public hearing as laid out in eight point three. By Councilman Utecheck, is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Regan, and we'll do the roll call vote, Councilman, Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
So this is a, an application for Max being reported by Council Office. Senator Max. Two thousand, state, about, two thousand, is that right, Max?
Yes.
And I, I'll get into the farmers market in twenty twenty, or, or, a holding brought suit, put in our best by many of us, through the commission as well as our state revenue, uh, the council. Is the I begin. Stuff. State's a big opportunity to plan for. If you have multiple hundred months to turn it down. Further, who's this, disability, and it is first or acting person. You personally have a, I'll be right here, you know what matters, is there a voucher program, state for, if you see, if you're better, it can be made to basically keep on using.
It's fair, we really it's it's too separate.
Yeah.
It's great to meet the outside. State, uh state, but it's easier with vendors too since I get. It's not all vendors that deal in basically. Onion, fruits, and vegetables. Basically. The board. Who's our councilor?
I think I'm having a very hard time hearing, and I got a text message from someone else. Uh, who's also on virtually and we I missed everything you guys just said, so. I don't know if there's something you might be able to do to adjust your audio.
I guess that might be the main thing. But basically, we were just discussing the um. Uh, the programs that you know, Public Human Services does to provide assistance so residents can utilize. Uh, the farmer's market if they're any limited.
You hear, are you hearing that, Katie?
Yeah, I'm hearing it now. Thank you.
So just projecting a little bit more. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as outlined in eight point four.
Make that motion.
So by Councilman Utech, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Egan. Do the roll call vote. Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Vice Chair Egan?
Aye.
Councilor Utech? And I have an I, so that is unanimous. That brings us to eight point five, eight, well, actually, eight point five A. We must to make these on various municipal boards and commissions, so I entertain a motion to approve the appointment to the housing authority.
I'll make that motion.
So by Councilman Utech? Second by, sorry, Vice Chair Egan, and we'll do another roll call vote. Uh, Councilor Utech?
John and I.
Yeah.
Aye.
Vice Chair Egan? Councilman Khan? Councilman Murray?
Aye.
That is unanimous. That brings us to item nine, old business, which there is none. Item ten, report of the town manager.
Great, thank you. Um, so it was a uh busy uh. End of the week, uh last week, between the high school lockdown, which I worked closely with Walt's, Dr. Will, I'm sorry, on a few different things. Um, every time there's a a false alarm, though, it's it's a good training uh opportunity for first responders as they believe it's real. Um, so we got a good look at at reaction um and and a good look at some processes to review. Uh, with that, the the improvements that we improved in the capital improvements, I believe it was to the. We made improvements to help. Prevent that and mitigate that uh in the future without getting too much into school security. We had the um. Very unfortunate tragic accident on one ninety five. Uh, with two victims um impacting so many around um and. I was, it was difficult for our first responders. John, Chief Vitell's doing everything he can. Uh, to to make sure that everyone feels well supported in that department, and I and I trust. Um, he's moving along just fine as well as uh keeping an eye on himself and. Uh, maybe um multiple times a week, uh and it's a good a good way to keep a gauge on that thing, having some. Um, background in that field. Uh, the farmer's market, however, um and on a positive side. Was, I thought, fantastic. I don't think it could have gone any better. I I have so many people uh to thank. Um, from the ag commission to the the P C, everyone on the P C C. Um, and our tourism, everyone really came together. I I don't think. We had a, we had a debriefing today. Really, there was, there was, we didn't find a whole much, a whole bunch that we could improve on. Uh, beyond uh handicap access, and we're looking at some uh ways to improve upon that. Uh, albeit albeit other temporary summer, it all depends on what we have moving down the road. Um, but it was very positive nonetheless. Also, uh prior, since our last meeting, we had the electronic recycling and the townwide shredding event, both. A very uh very successful as well, and so many positive things uh that came out of that, thanks to uh Chief Vitell and the Cert team. Um, for really assisting and doing a great job uh with that. Uh, we hired our time clerk that will start on the twenty second in our uh tax office. Uh, that'll 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 be for a woman who just recently left for other opportunities. As you can see, we're moving forward with the or ordinance sixty going to the public hearing. I'm thankful for the work that was done on that. Um. Commercial and commercial and economic development. Um, all I could say at this time is there are greener pastures on the horizon um and hang up. So uh very positive and and thanks to Dave Cochran and and some of the stuff they're doing, but um. I believe positive um action, positive attitudes um lead to uh positive uh events and successes, and. Uh, we're certainly heading that way. The budget presentation of the senior center, I thought, went well uh and was well received. Uh, Mr. Cherry, thank you for. Uh, recommending that I do that. I'll do it next year. Um, if you want to come, great. Um, Dr. Will wants to come, great. If you don't, great. Uh, Lisa came with me. She was a big hit and um. I I loved it. I I had a blast and I I need to. I'll do that kind of stuff uh anytime, obviously, working with the seniors. Thanks, Bev, and uh her staff were just uh fantastic in in getting it going. Library has a bunch of events coming up, some great stuff, uh including some stuff on beekeeping and their knitters. Uh, the two events on bees, um they're basically around bees, one about pollinators and one on beekeeping. Um, and their a bunch, their uh knitting and quilting programs are going strong. As you can see, um Santini um. Had started, is moving forward uh quickly in the um in their project. Uh, people reach out already looking to rent. Uh, I connected them or got them information um to Santini. Uh, getting here and getting those filled, so that's obviously a very positive side. Um, replacement of the fire station's going well. Uh, they're pouring and starting to pour the foundation this this week, I believe, while.
Tomorrow, they're gonna start.
Money on us, so that that's fantastic. The tennis courts is scheduled to start June first. Takes longer than you think. Um, they'll be down for a while, but luckily we have the uh. Reconditioned cords up um by the high school. Uh, while they're down, but we expect them to be down from June first through most of the summer into September. I'm working with Prague. We had a meeting uh to share services around um animal control. It was a good meeting. We cannot share with Ashford. We were told if we're gonna um. And some issues with that, but uh Wellington would be a logical partner. We'll look around um for some other things as well. Paving is starting. Um. These uh that that's getting underway. There was a slight delay. Uh, Director Laban mentioned it to me this morning, but nothing that's going to impact. Um, any of the dates or plans that we have. Uh, they started their parks and facilities. I thank them for getting the green looking so good this past weekend to include. Uh, the great uh event that we have uh before the prom where people come to the green and take pictures. Uh, it's Director Lap and his crew really did a great job getting that green uh looking uh beautiful, so I wanted to make sure. Uh, that we thank them and uh. Colleen charged her with larceny for stealing my thunders about the uh.
What?
Kayaks thing. Uh, that is such a such a great uh great thing that they did down the the rec center, and. I like her idea, grab it on Thursday, tack it onto a holiday weekend, and now we're going five days. For so I like it. So that's all I have for the town.
All right, are there any questions for Brian regarding his report?
I think those kayaks, sorry, it's gonna be a huge. I think they're gonna be a pretty good.
Hope so. Yeah, I think especially with um the romantic river and uh here in the globe is a launching point, and some people do it off of uh. Over near the Mansfield line at King Riverside, so a lot of good opportunities there.
I finished it off, Brian, with. I think he's expecting four more.
Oh, that's great.
But then I forgot to add, they come with like.
All right, Councilor Khan, and I see Councilman Murray's hand is up.
I'm concerned about. Shut down the high school. It's gotta be something happen. You gotta get whatever. Are we ready for it? Are we, I mean, I didn't know anything about it. Are are we learning anything? From those lessons?
That is entirely a question for the Board of Education as they uh oversee the security of the schools and the plans. I can tell you from my time in the state of Connecticut that they have a very thorough. Um, and well-practiced and well-trained um emergency response plan for the high schools to involve the Board of Ed, the teachers, parents. Fire Department, Police Department, um ambulance, and it's it is incredibly uh well thought out. I understand how anxious it can be in the moments leading up um. Then during those critical moments where parents just do not know. Um, and I know a lot of people turn to Dr. Will to communicate during those times. I can tell you from. Uh, training, our training, it is not his responsibility in the immediate moments uh to be communicating to the general public. That is the first responders' public safety. Um, to make those qualifications. Um, understanding how the processes work at the state and some of some of the deficiencies and speedy uh communications there, um I try to do the best I can to facilitate it. As to what caused it, um the last I had heard, they hadn't determined whether or not it was human error or electronic error. At any rate, as as. Well, we said by by the time um the school system starts next year, uh we'll have those upgrades to the radios that should repair it. I watched it very closely. I watched the response. I listened to it. I I debriefed with Dr. Bullet almost immediately after for an extended period of time in my office. I talked to the the state police and Chief Vitell during uh the lockdown period. I couldn't identify any deficiencies um and how it was responded. I know the general public sees things. They think they see things um. In an untrained uh way, and I understand how difficult it is for parents and 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 councilman kind. I'm sure you heard a lot of complaints. Um. We can't discuss. Security plans for schools um openly or or even response plans uh for that matter, too much, other than we do that they do the best they can. Should it have been an actual incident? Um. It would, if things probably would have would have unfolded um differently, but I hate to even speculate. I will answer your question.
Uh, the second is, thanks for getting back to me about. My concern uh those. Those your. Uh, time employer taking our cars home. My only concern is by different, whomever. I think there's a ten cars for the town hall or whatever it is, but like, how many? That.
How many are taking?
Why they're taking the car, they are four of them.
Yeah, there's that.
And they they all live out of town. That's my one concern. What is it?
That's not accurate. I don't I don't know how many um. Live out of town, but I know there are some certainly that do.
It's all. To best of my knowledge, like there's a, I know three of them personally, so like, they live about forty, forty-five to fifteen minutes away. Have you seen one of them? And to uh just in case of emergency or whatever it is, if they are. If you give them notice, they come on down and won't call or whatever it is, they might take them by an hour. By the time that the the house or whatever it is would be, so there's would be point of uh. Getting them over here rather than. You, you can be, you can live in town, 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 you can do that within a few minutes. And that's all my concern about my information is like whatever they pass. The people who used to live in town and like about seven minutes, four, eight, ten minutes ago, whatever it is, I think that more. Con convenience to uh employ. To me, honestly, it doesn't make any sense to me that this spending is fifty, sixty thousand dollars, is it? Um. But whatever it is, but.
So I understand that, and perhaps we could examine a residency requirement? Uh, if you'd like.
It's it's not the best.
Or radius requirement.
To me, it doesn't make sense that you live in about forty-five, ten hour away and. You give them a convenience of uh just in case of emergency, hey, come on down. They takes. Part of the time. Teleport. And you mean, if you're, they they are traveling from home to the side. To me, it doesn't justify it because every the gas, the fare, the car leave, whatever it is. You're talking about fifty, sixty thousand dollar easy for for employee and for for vehicle. That's the way I look at it.
Well, there is a defined cost that we can we can put a pinpoint. We can actually exactly what that cost is for employee. Uh, per vehicle. Uh, there's also the the aspect of if I'm an employee and I'm going home, um but I know I'm on a call. That I also have to amend my plans. Can I go to my daughter's? Sorry. Got to go away for the weekend. That's my call. Will something happen? Can it pop out right now? It's emergency and run somewhere else. So it's kind of a benefit to offset that commitment that they're making to the town. It's a defined benefit. It's a taxable defined benefit. If you want to remove it, I'm all for it. We can remove it for the next person uh that we hire or remove it and and compensate uh for for that position.
Response one, I mean, with the extra amount of time, I I do understand it, but like you said, that no. I mean, obviously, if you make call to Lisa, Lisa can say, you know what, I'm out for dinner with my family. It's not something that she's gonna call you, hey, can I go for a dinner? Uh, can I go out with her, whatever it is? There's no such a thing. She can say, you know what, I'm, no, I cannot make it. It was very simple.
She has a particular.
I I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, just give an example. It's not something. So that's. And on the other hand. My main concern was Bob. I mean, it's we. Came up with the audience safety and what we are offering him. Whatever it is. So that's why it's like, you know what, we are shipping it, taking it from here and there, but at the same time, we're helping. Our town boys. A convenience that that money we can be using for other purposes, like. That's my main concern is that you save those people not going to go to them, South Carolina, Florida. Even here, even because they are, to me, I think they are very valuable. Uh, then he's serving and then coming back, someone else coming. This makes sense to me. But. They supported. The town for last fifty years. And it's our, it's our time to give them something back rather than two hundred fifty or three hundred dollars, whatever. That's my main concern. And I'm just trying to save the money and try to bring it out to help.
Hey, thank you. I'm having a difficult time drawing a pair of bow. The.
It's not, it's not what you consider is like, we have some other big concern, like. There's now only one concern, though, like there's a water problem in town. We are doing whatever we can, but. There are some other issues which is main concern to the students, residents of town.
I think the point I'm trying to get to is.
To get.
By finding savings in other areas, you know, if we if we could save money on, you know, a vehicle, like, oh, could that could work, you know? A bigger budget for ordinance sixty or helping with water concern, I think, is just trying to find a degree of efficiency.
Other than protecting the employees, they are serving those people rather than you can give them for them now. I disagree with that.
Okay, understood. All right, sorry, just Councilman Murray had her hand up next, so I just wanna, and then and then I'll go to you. Councilman Murray?
Thank you. I just wanted to know if um Brian knows, and maybe he doesn't, if the tennis courts at Crandall are going to be straight for pickleball. Um, the ones at uh the across from the middle school or not.
Yeah, why not to keep those for the the um. School sports. Um, absolutely, is the answer to your question.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Councilor Utech, or is that your question?
Mentioned that last night, the only pickleball lines, yay, but. I just want a clarification. I know the trucks and the cars are a topic, are you saying, understandably? But say if. The staff members can't take them home, the few that do, would you have to compensate them? Otherwise, so they either get the car or they get increased differently in their salary.
It's it's a, it's a. About, we can put a value on it and compensate them for that. Absolutely, we can do that.
So the staff member may want one of the other. I guess.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, most likely it would probably come up in negotiations whenever those are up within within that bargaining unit, you know, if we were to say, well, we want to get rid of the cars. Probably the. Our kind of turn in there, turn to go, okay, well, if we're getting rid of this benefit, we would want this to compensate that.
Right, that's what I just want a clarification. Just something else just to think about, that's all, but.
Yeah.
I I understand what you're.
If I ever, if I. If I, if I, if I am applying for a job.
Hmm.
I know what I'm applying for, that's number one.
Hmm.
As a town manager, finance manager, or the building inspector, whatever it is, I know what I'm applying for. And I'm committed, I should be committed to that. It's not something that you don't want, hey, you need a pan or you need a chair to sit, no, it's not. I mean, they, they should be looking forward to serve the community, it's a community job. It's not a Bank of America or whatever it is, it's not, it's a community job to serve the residents. So they should know what they are applying for, and they don't, don't, don't like it. Uh.
Well, that's.
I'm not saying that we should lose people to over it, but whatever it is, but. There's gotta be a way.
I look at, we look at salaries. And the benefits and compensation to the employees, and especially those subject to.
It's more tough, and we are paying, I really, I think they, everybody have a decent salary over here.
I think.
Please know whatever it is, but.
I think we are, we are, we, salary wise, we are less than most. In most positions, um, and, and competitive at best. Um, and, and it's difficult, said before, difficult to get people to come to work here. Um, but when we post it, when a job opens and we post it and we want to reexamine it, uh, I'm all for that.
Okay, that'd be a council, thank you, Brian.
It's part of the total cost, part of the total cost package, right?
Correct. And, and our pay scales are less, that's a part of it, uh, even with the car, I can say we're still less than most in, in certain positions that these, that these state know.
So when somebody is hired, they know coming in that they have access to it.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yeah, we access the car from, from town hall to whatever they are doing in business, they, they show it, but besides that. If they live in town, I don't have a problem, because it doesn't nearby and that they are very, very much accessible twenty-four seven. But if, if they are far away, it's not serving the purpose. And thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Brian for his coming to report? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, adoption of minutes, are you gonna motion to adopt minutes outline in one point one?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, made by Council Utech, is there a second? Second, I'm gonna say, you have to raise your hand, second by Council Con. Roll call vote, Council Murray? Oh, you're still muted?
Aye. Aye.
Help the Utech?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that is unanimous, and then we'll actually, uh, keep Council Murray on unmuted, and then we'll run into correspondence to council.
Sure, I, there are four emails that came in between April twenty-sixth and today, uh, two regarding the budget. One was an invitation to the anaerobic digester ribbon cutting and one regarding heat pumps.
Thank you, Council Murray, and then just as an aside, and by, for those who were able to make that, but then, you commentary, I was out of state, but it looked great and. Hopefully there's new opportunities to sync up with uh. With Coventry to work together on that, or examining that. Sounds good, that brings us to thirteen chairpersons report, so there will be a broad executive committee meeting tomorrow at. Noon, we're gonna go over the Prague budget and resolution authorizing a agreement with the young and Asian health services. And then uh, last week's chair hour was canceled and moved to that, we're having our open house by our training center next Wednesday, at least so far. Uh, tentatively, myself, Vice Chair Regan, Council Con are gonna be there in the council, uh, Chairman Lundgren, Vice Chairman. Uh, Shaker, you know, for the Board of Ed, they're tentatively securing the other two members of that board. Mr. Powell's gonna be there for P B C and waiting for one more person from that group, and then from Z B A. Uh, Vice Chair Ben Chavalier, member Mike Martel, or Mike Pennington Martel, will be in attendance alongside Mr. Foley. Uh, looking to secure some, potentially some cookies from Matty's as well as other refreshments from the area, it's interesting for that, but. Hopefully I get that advertised, looking forward to having a really good event there. And that is it for me for chairperson's report. The fourteen communications and petitions from council members, are any further additions? Council Utech?
Um, one thing, thing again, I really hope with the referendum, yes or no, I wish more people got out and wrote. Again, I'll say it, we all worked very hard, um, incentives built in, and I think that's one of the reasons that we passed. So I think the council, the town managers, the staff, all the hard work that they put into it, um, it has not gone unnoticed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item fifteen, publicly listed, or public listed participation. On any subject from the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit, if you're on Zoom, you can hit star nine and raise hand function. Or if you are in the meeting room, you can approach the table and state your name and address for the record. You got any charge?
Now you're making me forget what I wanted to say.
My apologies, you can, you can take a moment.
That's okay, George Alder, Trish Young Road, uh, I'd just like to point out, one of the things is that. We always say, well, if state's paying for it or federal government's paying for it, I understand that, we pay all that money in. More than the federal government, then we get back.
Yeah.
But also the fact, I pointed out many years ago, but you weren't here, was that really, I uh. Firstly, named my pockets many years ago, I call one state, one federal, one local and one miscellaneous. So any of this stuff, well, it's nice and good and stuff and it ain't coming for me, well, it's coming for me, I'm the taxpayer. And I pay all these taxes, so it's not free money if it comes from the state or federal government, it's, it's a different pocket. And I also agree with Sammy on the fact that it seems like sometimes in some areas, we seem to be overcompensating. Uh, workers is a nice uh, thing to grab that and get somebody to work with you, but if. Somebody wants to live far away, that should be their choice. But really, it should be living in town, if they don't want to, then they should be uh, paying the cost of traveling back and forth, the gas insurance and so on. So I just like to point out also, thank you.
Next, thank you, George. Any other listed toll participation? Going once. Twice. Introduce again a motion to adjourn at eight o'clock on the dot.
And I'll.
I'll make that motion.
So my councilman Utech, is there a second? Second of my vice chair Regan, do roll call vote, Council Murray?
Aye.